The Monday, May 9, 2022, meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal? Commissioner Davis?
Present.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Commissioners, do we have a motion on Commissioner Bonzal's absence? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we excuse Commissioner Bonzal for his personal reasons?
That'll work. Do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners, up next, we have an agenda. Do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Davis?
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements this evening. Moving on to boards and committees. We have two appointments. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the appointments? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we appoint Bob Chapman to the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 4/1/25 and Daniel Labarre to the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee for an unexpired term extending 4/1/25.
Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Hill?
I second that motion.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion?
I am just happy to see more people being put onto committees in the city, and I want to thank them for their service.
Commissioner Hill, anything to add?
And yes, thank you for the service, particularly to Presque Isle Park, the jewel of Marquette.
All right, let's take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. That brings us to our first public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
Good evening. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, City of Marquette. I'm here to announce that the cigarette butt recycling program is beginning once again in the city of Marquette. We're not yet up to our regular routine of collecting dry cigarette butts and mailing them off, not mailing them, but sending them UPS once a week. What we're going through is going through all of the cigarette collection places we can hit and opening up the container and emptying them out. And usually, after a winter of a lot of snow and melting, there's no sand left in the container, so we're trying to fill in the containers with fresh sand. I did three today. In this, I'm being aided by community donations, getting sand from Chocly Ace Hardware and getting buckets at a vastly reduced price from Lowe's Hardware as well. Last year, we started cigarette recycling the last week in July, and we ended up with eighty-nine thousand for the winter, or for the summer. This year, we're starting basically in the middle of May, and I'm going to have enough for the first box to go out by the end of this week. So if you see a location around town where there's a lot of cigarette butts on the ground, let me know. I'm on Facebook. You can reach out to me. We have a regular pattern. We do the four cigarette recycling tubes along the beach park property. We also do the parking lots along the beach. And we're now setting up larger buckets in areas where we've had people emptying ashtrays into parking lots in the hopes that we will get them to empty the ashtrays into the bucket as opposed to in just the parking lot. It's a process. Last year, at this time, it didn't exist. This year, we're trying to make it routine and get to the point where people know they have alternatives to dumping these things on the ground or dumping them into the trash. And if someone has a better idea of how to do this or has some suggestions, we would welcome them. There is no guidebook on this. There is nothing on the Internet of how you run a community-wide recycling program for cigarettes. So we're making it up as we go, and we've been successful, and we hope to continue. And one of the things I wanted to explore this year was to work with the local hotels and get an information sheet out to them about all the different recycling opportunities for visitors to town who may want to clean out their travel garbage as they go, but they're not really sure exactly where they can go. But we do know there's glass recycling and cigarette butt recycling that's open to anyone. So these are just some of the things that are happening. But if you see a spot that looks bad, let me know, and we'll see what we can do. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Andrea Pernstiner, 521 East Ohio Street, and the owner of Ordock Brewing Company at 114 West Spring. I just wanted to let everyone know I was here in case there were any questions on Consent Agenda Item 5C. Also, as a frequent walker of the beach, I would like to thank you for your efforts and the volunteers in cleaning up those cigarette butts. I do thank, in living here for the past seventeen years now, having that recycling program has made a difference. So, thank you. Take that opportunity to say that.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Up next, we have a presentation from the Market Area Sister Cities Partnership. We have an update from Tristan Luma. Thanks for joining us today. Go ahead and get that set up. Wow, look at that graphic. I love it.
Get my clock going here, one second. Hey, everyone. Great to see you in person. It's been a year since we gave you an update last. But before I start today, I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to share what we've been up to and where we're going. It's been a really exciting year for us, getting a little more traction with our two Sister City friendships. So excited to share a little bit about those. So first off, for those who aren't familiar, the Sister Cities Partnership is a nonprofit organization devoted to supporting and maintaining international relationships with the city of Marquette, sister cities of Higashiomi, Japan, and Kayani, Finland. We're a pretty large, active board. I'm sure you see a lot of familiar faces up here. We're led by Mary Lou Blomquist and Paulette Lindberg, our Chair and Vice Chair, who are in audience here. Bill Brazier, our Treasurer, is also here, and Kurt Nason is our Secretary. Also, we are proud to be joined by Commissioner Davis as a representative from the city commission. Thanks, Sally, for all of your contributions thus far, and really enjoy working with you. So thanks for everything. One other thing I want to mention about this, Bill and Paulette do sit on our Michigan-Chiga Sister State Board. I'll explain a little bit what that is in a second here. But that gives them a good opportunity to go downstate on occasion, get the lay of the land, work with other communities who have similar sister cities partnerships, et cetera. So I'll start off with talking a little bit about our friendship with Higashiomi, Japan. So in 1968, the state of Michigan and Chiga prefecture in Japan formally entered a sister state relationship to help build international goodwill and provide opportunities for cross-cultural engagement through annual delegation visits and outreach. Fast forward eleven years. On August 13, 1979, the city of Marquette entered a formal sister city friendship with the city of Higashiomi, then known as Yokaiichi, the town of Yokaiichi, becoming the seventh city in Michigan at the time to establish such a friendship. And to date, we are one of just fourteen, one of fourteen proud sister cities in Michigan to be a part of this partnership. So a quick update about our delegation visits. We used to do those annually, alternating years, or we'd go there one year, they would come here the next. Those have been on hold since COVID due to ongoing travel complications and concerns around COVID. However, both sides, both Japan and the state of Michigan, are excited to resume that as soon as possible. So we're looking at as soon as next year. That would warrant us going there, sending a delegation over to Japan, and then in 2024, them sending one back to Marquette. One exciting event that we had in lieu of a delegation visit was a Clean the Closet fundraiser that you may have heard of. It was a dreary and cold day in January, and we had this five-hour-long fire sale trying to get rid of decades and decades of trinkets, artwork, other gifts that we've accumulated over the years. And it was insane. Everything got cleared off the tables in two hours' time. We raised eleven hundred dollars in the process. Really good way to generate, you know, get our name out there and generate goodwill among the community. People just loved seeing all that we had and taking it home with them. So that was a lot of fun. We're excited to continue our student exchange program. So the city of Higashiomi recently approved the funding to host a student from Northern Michigan University at the Japan Center for Michigan Universities in Higashiomi for the 2022-23 school year. It's a twenty-nine-year-old female. She was originally planning on going to Thailand for the semester or for the year, but caught wind of this program, applied for it, and got it, and she couldn't be more excited. So as the summer goes on, we hope to connect with her, invite her to our July meeting just to get acquainted with her, get to know a little more about her, and send her on her way to Japan. And then in turn, we're excited to be hosting another student from Japan at Northern as part of this program as well. So he'll be coming in the late fall for the full school year. Sister Cities involvement with that will be providing housing during school breaks and other long absences where the dorms might be closed. And anything else we can do to make him feel at home, inviting him to meetings and working with him. So excited for that. We have a video greeting that I'll close out my presentation with, that we sent over to Japan last fall. But moving on, one thing that I'm especially excited about, we've been working with Kazuhiko Kojima, who was a guest artist of ours a few years ago. You may remember his ceramic owl pieces that are up in the Sister Cities room and then across various offices and collections in town. So he reached out, interested in hosting an exhibit at the Nishi Borei Saburo Memorial Expedition Hall featuring work by Marquette artists. So this exhibit, we sent the artwork to him, and it's, everything's on pace. So we're excited to get that up in September, and that's going to be on display in Japan through January. These are the pieces. We have two more that they already have in their collection there, but these were all sent over digitally. It's a good collection. The whole point of this exhibit was to focus on the flora, fauna, and landscapes of Marquette, so really telling a story about who we are to the Japanese public. So really excited to share those pieces of home with them and the artists are as well. Jomini Kayani, July 30, 1997. This is preceded by some talks around 1990. By '97, the city of Marquette formally entered a friendship with the city of Kayani, Finland, making us just one of twelve U.S. cities to share a partnership, joining cities such, cities all around the country, including Texas, California, Florida, and of course, right up in Houghton, where Finlandia is. So delegation visits, those were on hold for a while. Our last big visit there was in 2017 to celebrate the twentieth anniversary of the friendship, as well as a hundred years of Finnish independence. We were joined by the Marquette City Band and the Coral Society, and that was wonderful. Talks kind of stalled from there, though, but we recently made contact with them again, thanks in large part to our board members, Randy Maureen Jensen, Walt Lindela, Marty Escaline, and the others from the Kayani Subcommittee. And there's mutual interest in resuming that friendship. So we're hoping to, as early as next year, send a goodwill mission over there just to get reacquainted, maybe reformalize that friendship, and then hopefully resume regular delegation visits. And the one last thing I want to mention about Kayani, I'll put on my other hat for this one. The City of Marquette Art Week is coming up, June 20 to 25, featuring events, exhibits, performances all around town, all completely free to the public. This year, the Sister Cities is partnering with the City of Marquette Office of Arts and Culture and Market Symphony Orchestra for a very special performance at Lower Harbor, celebrating the twenty-fifth anniversary of our friendship with Finland. So that'll be Friday evening down at Matson. Really special Finnish-themed program by the symphony. A lot of guest performers. It's bound to be a great one. So definitely encourage you to check that out. And just want to say thank you again. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the continued support, not only letting us present here, but continuing to embrace these two friendships. It means a whole lot to us and the work that we do, and it really pays. I mean, just being able to interact with people overseas and share a piece of our community with them means the world to us. So just want to thank you again. And I'll close off with a quick video. I think I just, just enough time.
Konnichiwa. I'm Mary Lou Blomquist, the new Chair of the Marquette Area Sister City Board, here in the Sister City Room of our Peter White Library in Marquette, Michigan. We have many memories in this room of our forty-plus years of friendship. And now we are looking forward to the time when we can all be together in person.
Thank you to everyone, including my host.
Thank you, Tristan. I just did want to open it up to the commission if anyone had any
Yeah, please.
comments or questions. We'll start with Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Tristan. Thank you for being the spokesperson for our committee. And just, Commissioners, this is a very dedicated and very passionate committee, and I really appreciate being part of it. I am very much looking forward to the trip to Japan next year. I'm hoping I get to be part of it. And I'm also very much looking forward to reconnecting with the Finnish delegation and hope to see all of you at the Midsummer Festivals this summer. So thank you.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Tristan, thank you. We really appreciate you coming and presenting. I think it's a highlight for us to see the connections we have with folks from around the world, especially our sister cities. And thank you to those from the committee and who work on this year round for coming tonight and for your continued efforts. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. Up next, we have our public hearings. We've got two. Item number three is Ordinance Number 707, Designation of Foot Traffic Paths. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. In recent months, the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee, PIPAC, has held several discussions about how to best preserve the natural and recreational benefits of Presque Isle Park in perpetuity. These conversations led ultimately to a handful of recommended changes, which were detailed during a presentation at the city commission's January 31 meeting. In response to commission direction at that meeting, staff is now recommending the adoption of Ordinance Number 707, which will allow for the designation of paths for foot traffic only. Aside from, aside from 707, Ordinance 708 is also recommended for adoption tonight. Staff has determined the other recommendations from the January 31 presentation can be addressed through enforcement of existing local and state regulations. Per city charter, an ordinance may not be enacted at the meeting in which it is introduced. The city commission scheduled this public hearing at the April 25, 2022, regular meeting. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, adopt Ordinance Number 707 in order to allow for the designation of paths for foot traffic only and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. We will go ahead and open the public hearing. Members of the public wishing to comment on this public hearing have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address. You can approach the center podium. Anyone wishing to speak on this public hearing? I don't see any movement. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we adopt Ordinance 707 in order to allow for the designation of paths for foot traffic only and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hill?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion? Nope. Commissioner Hill?
I think this is a really important way to help protect Presque Isle Park, and I really appreciate the time that the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee and city staff have put into this and the police department. It's my understanding that we are rising this to the level of ordinance so that we can, in fact, enforce that folks stay on paths in the park to reduce the significant erosion that we're having and the problems that that's caused on the park. So this will allow us to start enforcement. And again, this is being done primarily to protect the park because, you know, unfortunately, we are loving it to death, and there are areas where there is such significant erosion, and this will give us another tool to help address that.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I certainly support this and appreciate that not only is it a protection for the Presque Isle Park, but also that it addresses electric bicycles. I do have a question for staff, however, and that is that we have many residents and visitors who have limited mobility and get around on motorized wheelchairs. And it, the way I read Section 46-93, they would not be allowed on bike paths. And I just want to, I'm just bringing up that issue because I have seen them. And actually, I've had people apologize in wheelchairs to me that are on the bike path. So is that something that we could accommodate?
You know what? Actually, I, if you don't mind, Suzanne, I would defer to the city attorney on answering something like that, but I think that would require further, further amendment, possibly to the ordinance.
Possibly. That is not something we specifically discussed as we were working through this. However, we would not be able to discriminate against people under the ADA. So if they are disabled, they would be allowed to do that regardless of our ordinance. Otherwise, we would be subject to discriminatory action against them.
So what I hear you saying is that if someone is in a motorized wheelchair, they are welcome to use the bike path?
That would be my belief, yes.
Okay, that's good. I hope that that can get communicated to the community, because as I said, I've had two people in motorized wheelchairs apologize to me because they were on the bike path. And we don't want to do that. So, okay. Thank you.
Just to add, if you don't mind, I did hear from Community Services Director John Swenson that ADA does allow for that, and that is something that was, I believe, considered.
Any other discussion on this item? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. City Clerk, could you please conduct our roll call vote?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse? Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Brings us to our next public hearing, Ordinance Number 708, Wildlife Feeding Prohibition. This will require a roll call vote as well. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. In recent months, the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee has held several discussions about how to best preserve the natural and recreational benefits of Presque Isle Park in perpetuity. These conversations led ultimately to a handful of recommended changes, which were detailed during a presentation at the city commission's January 31 meeting. In response to commission direction at that meeting, staff is now recommending the adoption of Ordinance Number 708, which would prohibit the feeding of wildlife in the city. Aside from Ordinance Number 707, also recommended for adoption tonight, staff has determined the other recommendations from the January 31 presentation can be addressed through enforcement of existing local and state regulations. Per city charter, an ordinance may not be enacted at the meeting in which it is introduced. The city commission scheduled this public hearing at the April 25, 2022, regular meeting. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, adopt Ordinance Number 708 to prohibit feeding wildlife and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Members of the public wishing to make a comment on this public hearing have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and address. Go ahead and approach the center podium. Seeing no public comment, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, we have a motion on this item. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I will motion to adopt Ordinance 708 to prohibit feeding wildlife and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign.
And do we have a second? Oh. Commissioner Hanley?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only that it's certainly needed, Your Honor, to deal with the situation we've had for the past several years. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley, anything to add?
Nope.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Hill?
I, if folks have questions, it is stated in the ordinance, there's the purpose, and it does explicitly carve out for bird, bird feeding in specific healthy ways is allowed in an elevated bird feeder. And this hopefully will address problems. There are potential, there's potential harms to animals and humans that we are seeking to address with this ordinance.
Any other discussion? City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Up next, we have consent. This also will require a roll call vote due to Item 5C. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent?
Rose John.
Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion, Commissioner Hanley?
Nope.
Pro Tem Mayor?
None.
Any other Commissioners? City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Now we're on to unfinished business. Item number six, Spinway MQT LLC Lease Agreement. City Clerk, background, please. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In May of 2021, the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors and the City of Marquette entered into a one-year lease agreement with Spinway MQT LLC, a locally-owned, limited liability company, to lease a 10-foot by 24-foot section of city-owned property adjacent to Lake Shore Boulevard to operate an eight-unit automated bicycle rental vending terminal. The lease terms specified that the installation, operation, maintenance, repair, and liability of the rental unit was the full responsibility of Spinway MQT LLC. At this time, Spinway MQT LLC is seeking an extension of the lease agreement through April 30, 2025. All other terms remain consistent with the initial lease. This proposed lease provides the DDA and Spinway MQT the right to terminate the agreement at any time and for any reason by providing written notice to the other 60 days prior to May 1 of each year of the agreement. The rental rate was set at $500 per year. This proposal and lease agreement was reviewed and approved by the DDA Board of Directors on April 14. The proposed lease agreement was introduced at the Commission's April 25, 2022 meeting and approved as recommended to move the lease agreement forward to the May 9, 2022 meeting. Fiscal effect: The Downtown Development Authority will receive $500 annually during the term of the lease agreement. Recommendation: Approve the lease agreement with Spinway MQT LLC and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Hill?
I move that we approve the lease agreement with Spinway MQT LLC and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
And do we have a second? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Hill, any discussion?
This was done as a pilot last year. It worked very well. I've heard good things about it, and so we've opted to go ahead and extend the lease, and I encourage folks to bike whenever they can.
And we, Pro Tem Mayor, any other discussion?
I don't think I have anything further to add.
Any other commissioners? Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And lastly, we have new business, one item, item seven, amended reimbursement agreement, Eagle Brownfield Grant and Loan. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has been invited to submit an application for a Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy Eagle Brownfield Grant in the amount of $495,000 and an Eagle Brownfield loan for up to $1 million. The Eagle grant will reduce the amount of Brownfield Tax Increment Financing, TIF, revenues required for environmental eligible activities, and the Eagle loan provides favorable terms, no principal or interest for five years, and an estimated 1.5% interest for the next 10 years that will reduce interest costs and Brownfield TIF obligations. As part of the Eagle Brownfield Grant and Loan application and to receive the grant and loan, Eagle requires the local municipality take two actions: A resolution approved by the governing body that accepts the loan and commits to repayment, and a development and reimbursement agreement that details the arrangements for performance, documentation, reimbursement, and compliance with the Eagle Brownfield Grant and Loan agreements. Importantly, the reimbursement agreement obligates the developer to repay the loan and requires Jonathan and Jennifer Julian provide a personal guarantee to repay the loan if there are insufficient Brownfield TIF revenues. Attached are the Eagle Brownfield Grant and Loan Resolution and an amended reimbursement agreement. The reimbursement agreement was originally approved in October 2021 by the Brownfield Authority and the City Commission and has been revised to incorporate the following key elements necessary to obtain the funding. Section 2.4 prioritizes Brownfield TIF to repay the Eagle Brownfield loan right after any Brownfield Authority or city bond payments. Section 2.5 obligates the developer to repay the Eagle Brownfield loan if future Brownfield TIF revenues are not adequate to meet the Eagle loan payments, and incorporates a personal guarantee by Jonathan and Jennifer Julian. And Section 2.7 details the process for conducting, documenting, and receiving reimbursement for eligible activities in accordance with the requirements of the Eagle Brownfield Grant and Loan agreements. Fiscal effect: The Eagle grant and loan will reduce Brownfield TIF obligation for repayment of eligible activities. Recommendation: Approve the resolution authorizing the submission of a Brownfield Grant and Loan application by the City of Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the amended reimbursement agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Oops, sorry about that. Commissioners, we have a motion on this item. Commissioner Hill?
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the submission of a Brownfield Grant and Loan application by the City of Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the amended reimbursement agreement.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that motion.
Commissioner Hill, any discussion?
Yeah, this was interesting to me. I did ask, and there is likely going to be the need for a, let me get this right, a vapor mitigation system on the parking lots down there. There's that, so the environmental contamination is going to require being addressed through a system, and so it's my understanding these funds are going to help contribute to that. And in going out and getting this separate pot of money, it's going to reduce the city's obligation, reduce the timeline for the money to be reimbursed, and so it's going to bring it back in full tax status sooner. So this is going to take care of contamination and help our financial situation in approving this amendment. And if I got any of that wrong, did I, yeah, I got it right. And so this is good news for us and for the project. I would also, I would wonder, though, if we could have just a refresher on maybe where the process is on this project?
Certainly, and I do want to just say that it's an amended reimbursement agreement that we're presenting today. And I'm actually, you know, because Assistant City Manager Sean Hobbins has been working so closely with the Brownfield Authority on this one and as well as the developers, I will defer to him just to make sure that there's an accurate portrayal of the timeline that's coming forward, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. So the Brownfield plan was approved last summer. The reimbursement agreement followed in the fall. This is an update to that reimbursement agreement to account for the Eagle funds that are being received. The next step in this would be the development agreement. We are looking at that probably in the next month or two. We've been working through a parking study with a consultant paid for by the Brownfield Revolving Loan Fund to determine how the details of the management and costs of the public parking facility. So we've been kind of working through that on an extended timeline. I don't believe the project as a whole is expected to break ground on new construction until next spring, so there hasn't been a significant rush to deal with that, and we've had time to let the study kind of play out. So following that, it would be an operations and maintenance agreement, and that's something that we are going to wait for a new DDA director to get on board with before we push forward. So I would say development agreement next month or two, operations agreement end of the year, first quarter 2023, as appropriate.
And so the next body that would actually take up something with this would be the Brownfield Authority? Is that right?
So the Brownfield Authority and City Commission would both be a party to the development agreement. This reimbursement agreement, I believe, has already been approved by the Brownfield Authority.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley, did you have any discussion? Any other commissioners discussion? Commissioner Davis?
Just a quick question. Do we have an estimate on how many years this will reduce the Brownfield TIF?
That's an excellent question.
I don't know if I have it off the top of my head, but I believe it's one to two years.
Okay.
One other question?
Sure. Any other commissioners discussion, questions? Commissioner Hill?
When would we get to see the parking study? I think that's going to be of interest.
I think that's something that we could provide along with the development agreement next month or so.
Thank you.
We're still waiting on a final version of that. It's been an ongoing process.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Pro Tem Mayor?
I just wanted to add that, you know, this is a good thing from the state that's going to benefit both us on the city side as well as the developers and the project on their side, and I just appreciate John and Jen making the drive over here for this.
Well, I would echo that. I think that this is a good news story, you know, that we've, for once, we had kind of a laid agenda, but this is definitely something to be highlighted as a win, so we appreciate your work on this, city staff working on this to reduce that length of the Brownfield. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. Anyone, or all in favor, go ahead and say yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, city attorney. City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero, and thank you for the save, city attorney. Appreciate that, Suzanne. All right, on to public comment session number two of the evening. If you'd like to make a public comment, go ahead and approach the center podium. Three minutes, name and physical address, please.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. At the last commission meeting, the commission voted four to three to accept a grant which would provide a 64-gallon recycling bin to every household in the City of Marquette, whether they wanted it or not. I was adamant at that meeting that this was not a good path forward. I have shared thy views on this with people on Facebook, and it's been an interesting balance of comments, which "we love our carts, you're wrong," to people saying, "What am I going to do with the cart, especially when the snow comes?" And I would point out, for the first time, and I think since Commissioner Boncel has been on the commission, he and I both are in opposition to this program. And I would encourage you to think about that when two people who normally don't agree do agree on something. That should cause you to pause and ponder this. Tonight, I heard that you're going to be increasing the property tax in the city to bring in badly-needed money for critically-needed city services. At the same time this is happening, a truck is going to pull up in front of my house one day and put a cart in front of my house that I don't want. And at the same time, I'm going to be paying more money, and I know it's a grant, but I also think the two, two plus two always equals four. However, considering the fact that you sometimes have to let things fail before people see that it was a mistake, I will not be commenting on this anymore. It's going to fail. It's going to fail for a lot of reasons, mostly having to do with changing people's habits. You've got many, many houses in this town that simply don't have room for the cart. I don't have a garage. I don't want to build a garage for the cart. Six months of the year, it's going to be too much snow to use the wheels. You'd have to drag it back and forth. Dragging it is not something I'm interested in doing. So as the carts are distributed, I will be pressing Waste Management to set up a recycle station probably off of Wright Street so people can bring their garbage there instead of trying to get in and out of the very difficult parking at Waste Management on Barriga Avenue. I would also encourage you to look at the comments, which is, the people who wanted the carts already have them. That's fine. The people who don't want the carts never said we wanted them. So when you're giving people stuff they don't want and never wanted in the first place, their question is, why are you doing something with no common sense? And that is literally the last thing I'm going to say about this. My prediction is it's going to fail. My only hope is that it doesn't fail with personal injury or property damage. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Howdy, folks. Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, City of Marquette. I'm coming as a follow-up from last week's meeting because you did answer a few questions, and I want to say thank you, but I come with receipts now. So I have a question for, we have a five-year, it's called master plan, and please stop using the word "master plan," but we have a five-year recreation plan that was started in 2016. So that means five years is 2021. It states in here, I mean, we've got these things, and we've got this budget list, and it's really small lettering, but I did read it. Lakeview Arena apparently has an employee salary of about $200,000. And I'm wondering, how is that done when you've got temporary employees that are running the Zamboni machine, temporary employees that can't get more than two years under the belt because of the rules that the seasonal employees have? How is the overhead of Lakeview Arena $200,000,000 when we don't use it every year? And I don't mean this as a dig. I mean this as, I don't think you've done a very good survey for Lakeview Arena. There's a lot of things that, Lakeview Arena, it says here, but there's two companies at Lakeview Arena, and none of that's mentioned in this. There are things that, when you go through the actual survey, question seven says, "How well are facilities met to meet the needs of the responding households?" That's great, but Lakeview Arena is not mentioned. It's called indoor, what is it, indoor athletic facilities or outdoor recreation ice skating hockey area. Again, those are two separate things. We only have two indoor facilities run by the city. One is Barriga Gym below here, and the other is Lakeview Arena. So I'm really kind of curious why there are holes and why there are paint falling off the roofline of Lakeview Arena. This was six years ago that we said, hey, it's kind of important, and we think we're doing it well, but we want to have an indoor ice rink. We want to have an outdoor ice rink. We want to have a recreation facility, a reception facility for 600 guests. This was all done before COVID. And my point is, recreation kind of changes, but there's a lot of things we're never going to need again. But we do need paved parking. We do need better snowplow removal. We do need better toilets. By the way, the survey asked about Lakeview, and it says we have two toilets in Lakeview. We have actually 12. There's a facility in every single locker room, and there are 12 locker rooms. So we have a huge facility, and I'm wondering, can we, in the next five-year plan, get a specific Lakeview Arena survey? Because a lot of these questions that you were asked in this survey from six years ago really have no point. I'm sorry, I'm going through it really quick, but apparently, we have a lot of work to do, and I'd like you as a city to put a budget to it. Please, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. We'll start things off with Commissioner Davis.
I have only one, and that is to thank Margaret Brum for the cigarette butt recycling program that really has made a difference in our community. You've not only cleaned up a lot of the cigarette butts that would otherwise be in Lake Superior, but you've also very much created awareness. And you talked about that there's no guidebook for this, but you are creating that guidebook. That's all I have.
Commissioner Hanley?
I'm also going to keep it short, and I'm just going to encourage everyone that missed out on our special meeting that we had directly before this meeting to watch it on our city webpage. It goes over a lot of very important topics that are affecting our city. The main thing, look, of course, that the meeting was about was about a possible property tax increase by increasing the mills. I think that everyone should watch the meeting. They did a great job of explaining why it's necessary right now and why it's a step we have to take going forward. Thank you.
Pro Tem Mayor?
Well, the two things I was going to say were both said, but I guess I will briefly say thank you as well to Ms. Brum for starting the cigarette butt program. And I went out for a very long walk last night with my wife and my little one and down to the beach, and I have already noticed a difference, so thank you. And the only other thing I was going to suggest was to any residents here now or watching at home is, again, to go back to our special meeting, which was recorded, and really watch that. Commissioner Davis mentions during that meeting to even pause it at certain points and really think about some of the things that are said, because a lot of it, we had to go through it somewhat quickly, but if you kind of break down the video, it's really important and educational to do so. Thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. Is our, I just want to confirm, we're going to have a special meeting on the 16th? Is that right? Or did that not happen?
We have not yet announced that, yet. We're still solving that, but it looks like we're trying to.
Okay. Thank you. So, yeah, so two things. One is, I also want to thank our citizens for stepping up and getting engaged, and particularly the sister cities with this, the times that we're in right now. It's all more important than ever that we maintain international relations, and I really international relations, and I really value your commitment to this, and thank you for decades of connection. And I wanted to bring up, yes, please watch the video that we did today about our tax situation. And there also is a, a program was done called Media Meet that talked about the old hospital redevelopment project that I thought was very interesting and well done. And that's going to be coming here. There's going to be decisions made about that soon, and announcements being made. I just, I was asked by residents to ask a particular question, which I'm going to do now because I'm not sure, we're going to have other meetings, but I, folks have asked me to make these questions, and there will be multiple opportunities to get these answered. One is, oh, because there were sessions that the NMU Foundation led that were open to the public and other focus groups that happened, plus the conversation on Media Meet, which is available online. And the questions were, one, the NMU Foundation is going to have an equity stake in the development. And the question that was stated by the NMU Foundation. And so the question that I was asked to ask was, how much is that stake? And how much money is going to be made or is being projected to be made by the NMU Foundation? And then the second question has to do with which developers are being selected. And I've had multiple people approach me with this question.[1534.82]